Is removed. We did that last time.
Are you going into executive session?
Yes, we are going into executive session. And we may take. So we may take action after. Okay, um, so the agenda.
Did you want to add an F to new business?
Thank you, yes. We are adding F to new business. It's a statement from the governor about administrative leave on Good Friday for employees. I think I have it all now, right now?
Yes.
Okay.
Motion to approve. He had minted the agenda.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, we have an agenda, thank you. The minutes from March 2nd. Any additions or corrections to those minutes?
Motion to approve.
Second. Absent. He will.
Absolutely.
All right.
We do have, there was something, and that was, um, on the new business. We had a discussion to plan for their head, um, for the liquor license.
Georgia, could you use your microphone? I can't hear you.
Yeah. We had discussed to plan, have everyone plan for their head before they apply for their liquor license, or not at the last minute. And that should be included.
Oh, to give an update to that, all people that affects were sent a letter today as a courtesy of reminding on that policy.
So we can add that to the, if we add that to the minutes, are we all? Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Bills in between. $13,977.2 cents.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Current claims, again, that consists of our credit card bill, which is now $620.80, as opposed to what you have in your package, $650.74, so that went down due to a credit we received right after. And also our regular current claims of $70,784.8 cents.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes. Lauren Doyle, page number four, halfway down. Sent for concrete, $19,096. Where was this done and for what reason?
It was at the golf course Nathan's Building. And Mason is there.
Yeah, it was, uh, Don Reber was the general contractor that I worked through. And he basically got the quotes due to concrete. Lauren Doyle was one of the subcontractors that came in the low bid. And instead of him raising the rate for his general contracting fees, he's decided just to waive his fee and have us bill directly. That's why we're on going.
And a little bit further down, machinery and equipment, the mower, 75-73-09, I picked up some of the old parts.
Yeah. $10,000?
That's the street department's ditch mower, or the back wing mower.
Oh, okay. That's all I have.
What's?
Yeah, Black Hills Technologies, what all is that? What is that? That's all professional services for what?
Where are you at?
What page?
I'm at page one.
First page, first item.
Black Hills Special Service.
Black Hills Technologies.
That's for our monthly waiver fee that each department pays. Then there's ink cartridges from the police department.
That's manual for IT personnel.
Yeah.
Okay. Now solar sound, when was that contract to expire? Down towards the bottom of page for 374.
Which page again?
Last, very first page.
Second from the bottom.
That's not the on there. Our contract expired with them at the end of January.
Well, if you don't want it, why are we still paying them?
Are they still billing us?
I'd recommend that this was approved, that would be omitted from this. Our contract expired in January with them.
Are they still doing?
No.
The business now?
Right now, we have a proposal from many different providers.
Okay.
Okay, and then on page four, I see we're still buying stuff at Sam's Club. I mean, I understand, we gotta buy something. These concession foods, I guarantee you, you can work with these local grocery stores and they can get that. How about we can get the ink, the labels, and the paper and tell them, can't we?
That's Kathy's.
And on page nine, we got $62.50 for half-down payment for a sauna. I'm assuming that's for the plunge. But then on the page before that, you got $938 worth of cedar we bought from Connect Home Center. I guess, what was that for?
The cedar was for the roof and the sauna, but they could not return it because it was cut. Special, that's my understanding.
It was a special order.
It was a special order, so it couldn't be returned.
The restocking fee made it tax prohibitive to return it.
So we got a thousand bucks worth of cedar we're not gonna use.
It will still be used, not for that first purpose.
We'll just line somebody's closets.
Probably not.
Flint Electric, that was for Evans Plunge Two for $8,525. Where's the bill for the coils?
Have we received that yet? Have you not received the yet?
So you got another $20,000 right here on that one page for the plunge. I guess my point of... These department heads, do they ever come in from month to month and actually ask for their budget to see where they're actually setting?
Yes.
Okay. Because let's say we're way over. So what do I got?
Are they way over? Their budgets?
Well, their budget is spread over 12 months and we're only in the third, so no.
Well, if you're spending more than you're taking in, I'd say you've exceeded your budget.
Yeah, we know though that.
But you do realize we had the closure and we planned to do it. Most of our maintenance work in February, which is what we did. So there shouldn't be.
But when you set a budget, you don't have to spend all.
Right.
When you know you're running short, you should probably just curtail it, I guess is my point.
Agreed.
And that credit card, I still don't understand why we're buying all this stuff with the credit card. I don't.
You brought it up last month and it does take a billing cycle for the credit cards to slow down. And we talked about the fact that their, the credit card policy that was passed by resolution by this board allows it to be used for anything they deem necessary. So we've requested that they slow it down, but there are departments that are gonna continue to use credit cards. So you'll see those bills at every council meeting.
Our postage will be on there all the time, the city hall.
And aren't you fixing it so that we will see them before they're paid?
Yeah, that's why you got it.
Okay.
I have one thing. Okay. The very last item, add for equipment manager position. The equipment manager.
Is that still the golf course item?
Yeah, that's, uh, we'd like to hire an equipment manager for the golf course. Right now, we currently have an interim equipment manager.
If I go mechanic or mechanic, right?
Mechanic, yeah.
We're really talking about the mechanic.
Yeah.
Full-time mechanic position.
Full-time, year-round.
And this council wanted us to advertise far and wide and it costs money. Okay. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carrying, item C, um, the tabled Black Hills Technology Invoys from the middle of February.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any other discussion?
That actually wasn't tabled, that was voted on the last meeting.
No, it was tabled on the 17th. We voted on the second. We are voting again today. Any other discussion?
Aren't we voting because you didn't have five votes to spend money? Is that correct?
You have an explanation in the package.
Right, but that's why we're re-voting.
Yes.
We didn't, there weren't enough votes to pass.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carrying. Okay, communications from the public. Georgia, I won't make you sit over there. But going forward, we're gonna have this table here. It's easier for filming and also for the council to hear. I have a couple people that requested to be on the agenda, so I'm gonna put you third, if you don't mind, Don, thank you. So Georgia requested to be on the communications from the public, so I'll let her go first and then Don. I think you're here, right? Oh, right. I hate when they hide right from me.
This is in regard to some of the things that happened and we're advertising a paper this last week. But the plunge is not owned by any political party. I think we need to make sure we understand that. It is owned by you. You voted for the city to purchase, run, and keep open for the public, the Evans Plunge, with its Hot Springs name and logo. You should treat this property and all property owned by the city as your child. And this includes the library, the Mueller Center, airport, golf course, and parks. Don't half clothe them, half support, half shelter, or half protect something that you love. I had a brave person come up to me and say she voted against buying the plunge because as a business owner, she felt we didn't borrow enough money to expand and remodel it. She knew that you need to invest in a business to improve and to make a profit. That was our short sight. But she loves and supports it now. We did not spend six or eight million dollars, or 170 million, as some cities have been doing, to buy or build a community project. We are keeping up with something that means even more to our business owners and families in this area. And that is to stay open year-round and to support it. To protect, to love, our historical town. Again, I will reaffirm that all we have done is showing progress for Hot Springs by sales tax and through building, sales, the bid board, the liquor sales. And we have brought up our city revenue in 2014 by almost $245,000. This shows to me and should show to you that our city does have the ability to be supported by you, the public. My son has gone to war twice to fight for your freedoms, to speak, but don't abuse it.
Thanks, Georgia. Don. Try on our new setup first.
I'll try to be there. Thank you.
That's not the long breathe.
I'm sorry, but I don't have time to have a, I don't really gotta come. Am I supposed to say that?
Please, thank you. And congratulations on your award.
I'm here to speak for Honor Our Heroes. And to make it brief, because I think it's important that, considering what's happened the last few months, a couple months, that I say so. It's important to understand who Honor Our Heroes are. I provide, I provided each of you with a list of who we, Honor Our Heroes, represent. And I'm gonna read the first part of it, for the entire group. What is Honor Our Heroes? Honor Our Heroes is a group of volunteers who are diversified.
Don, do you mind? Can you share a microphone with the suite?
Okay, can you hear me now? Okay, I think this is important. Honor Our Heroes is a group of volunteers who are diversified. We have no vested interest in this proposal. And we are dedicated to accomplish this task. The team is a team of proven performers that have accomplished two major events in August 2013, 2014, along with other major accomplishments within the city of Hot Springs. The objective at this point is to refurbish, re-energize the Freedom Trail. Having said that, what have I done, what have we done so far? We have contacted and briefed the director and staff of South Dakota State Historical Society. We did this by requesting our state representatives to make an appointment for us. The results were on this project beyond my expectations. They are very interested in partnering, partnering, yes, joining us with the city of Hot Springs and Honor Our Heroes. They have requested I submit a request to declare Hot Springs Freedom Trail an official state historic area. Funding is limited through the state, but they are willing to commit the funds that they have to this project. We contacted and met with a historical grant group to acquire funding for the project. They are very interested in funding our venture. And in June, we will submit to receive funding for the Freedom Trail. This week, we will be submitting to receive at no cost a monument honoring the Native American Code Talkers. And why am I here? I was told that there were sandstone marble available and we would have it for our use in this project. The grant one requires that I come up with matching in-kind contributions. I was told a contractor offered to buy the sandstone and now mysteriously, there isn't, at the city. I was told at a previous town hall meeting, we could go forward with this project. And when inquiring about the sandstone and proving, providing a brief to the city hall, I was told I needed to fill out a form to get the park's permission to go forward. I understand the city is considering a proposal for an outside source to engage in placing statues around the city. I also understand that we, Honor Our Heroes, were portrayed as dragging our feet on this project. I submit that the above actions have not been at no cost to the city and we are not dragging our feet. We are moving forward in a very positive way. I would also invite all of you to walk out the back door and look at the very unfinished project that was started years ago at the Mueller Center. It still sits there, going. What do we need? The support of the city council and the city of Hot Springs. I need that. We can't move forward without that. Because I speak for you when I go forward and speak to people. I don't speak for myself. The people who comprise Honor Our Heroes are the same people who are involved in numerous other communities, cities, states, and national projects. Some of us even have real jobs. We have, if we have to fight to move forward with this project, then we need to discontinue this project at this time before I invest any further in it. If we can't be trusted to speak with authority for the project and for the city of Hot Springs, then we need to know that now. Every document we submit will come to the city council and/or the mayor for signature and endorsement. But I would like that to happen in a very quick, expeditious manner because most of the things we're working on need to happen quickly. For example, for the Code Talkers Monument, I need to get that in this week if we're gonna be able to do that. I need to know, are we gonna go forward? Do you want me to continue with this project? And do I have the support of the city?
Yeah, my support. I don't know where you was getting some of your information, Don.
The things you were saying, I was hearing for the first time. I don't know except the marble thing. No, actually, I heard the marble.
It was the last council meeting, I wanted to, somebody.
Ask for it, yeah.
Hey, Don, we don't have any marble, but.
Oh, I got the marble now.
I was gonna say, I know.
Marble's okay.
Who's gonna donate you marble?
The problem is, for example, I'm gonna build these statues. And the form you have talks in depth about that. I would ask that each of you read that too, because it's very nice document. We're ready to put the statues up. I need the monuments built, the base for the monument, and that is our contributing portion.
Right, because the city's contributing portion.
Nor do I intend to come to the city for a single penny for this, for this thing. But we're gonna need your assistance and help down the road because I can't do it by myself.
You're saying we need to build the base of this project and then you're bringing the statue to put on it?
Yes.
You need the sandstone, is that what you were saying on that?
The way it will work, basically, I have, we will, we will come together with the project. I.e., the first project we would like to do, Lawrence Ruck. Claire, uh, yeah, okay. Once I have the basics down on how the statue will be built and what will go around the base of the monument, I will bring that to the mayor for approval. Then we'll have to go because I'm gonna get declared a state historic area. Then I have to go to the state to make sure all the words on there are correct and everything is historically correct on that, that block. Then we will have, we will tell you how big the base needs to be and we will need to build, I will ask the city to build the base for the statue zone.
And we've been talking about that, so I don't know. About supporting that, so I don't know where we got. We have a miscommunication, obviously, being.
I love reading.
It's in reference with Matt Lance last week, or last city council meeting coming in requesting, saying. So it wasn't a council person?
No.
No, no.
Okay, I was gonna say.
I need, I need to know because I'm committing you. Okay, I commit my word that I will do this. And I'm committing this to the city and this council to do something. I will not go outside you to do that. You will know what I'm doing. And that's why I'm here tonight to report exactly what I've done so far. But we go to ink soon. And the money will come in June. And I am moving forward. We will have statues on the monument. And if you read the proposal.
As far as I know, you guys asked for the sandstone before Mr. Spitzer being in Africa. And I know there's a lot of pieces out there still. So as far as I'm concerned as a councilman, you got first choice of what to mean before we do anything else to that estimate. But I'm only one person.
It was last September when we requested.
I know.
Yeah, and I don't think that's a problem. I think the only discussion that we've had internally at city hall about that is do you really want a sandstone base versus a concrete base or something? I mean, we need to work those kind of details.
Well, the sandstone would not be used for the base. I think we also have markers along the way of when the war is. That's the second part of the project.
You know, we, I think we just need the details of how you wanna use it. There is sandstone laying around, literally?
I feel much better now. The form that people provided for the parks, that's what I intended to do. We'd like to know, what do you want from the city? On the form, we have a concrete base for sure, but there's no specification to how much sandstone or proposed location even. I know it's around the Old Dairy location. But we're still waiting for confirmed location from your organization. I guess the details is what we're waiting for as a council, but I'd say you have everyone on this table's support in what you're doing.
We actually talked about it at the last parks meeting where we were proposing to put the bases in for you.
Yeah.
It's just a matter of you.
Statute's still ready to be vandalized?
I was just curious.
Oh, yeah.
No, I mean, what is the statute? Because I haven't heard, what is the statute?
Well, we, we're still waiting on the final details, but it's to look like Mr. Russell, right?
Lance Russell is a Medal of Honor winner who was buried on top of the hill. Mr. Russell fought with the 93rd New York Infantry in the Civil War. After the Civil War, he became a conductor and traveled around the United States. He fought against the 42nd Virginia at Smith's Creek or something like that. Point is, he lost two fingers and it was a total devastation in the 42nd Virginia Infantry. They never, were ever reconstituted or whatever. He was given the Medal of Honor. He came here, stayed here, he worked with seven citizens. He went up to the VA hospital, died with tuberculosis, and they buried him. After they buried him, they figured out, they found out he was a Medal of Honor winner and put the stone. He was a simple man. He was one of the people that started Hot Springs, South Dakota. And he's the perfect fit person for the start because the Civil War is the start of Hot Springs, South Dakota. So they don't care. So the group is pretty well fixed on that person. And he's a hero, and we have photographs of him. Is that okay?
Yeah.
I don't, I mean, I don't like anybody else to speak up if they have any concerns with what Don has said because that's completely not what we've been working on.
Can I suggest we put it on our?
We absolutely want to support what you're doing.
Why are you sat here talking to us when you shouldn't be out there working?
My concern is, I put my name on it. And I had the feeling that it was possible that I didn't have it. That this was not something we needed to do. But I feel different now.
I would suggest, I would suggest we put it on our agenda to vote on next agenda.
We have the details.
Yes, okay, would that be all?
I would like it.
But I'm gonna publicly congratulate you and Kim on your work with Honor Our Heroes. We are all, we don't all agree on everything, obviously, up here, but that is one thing I think we all do agree on is that we are proud to be the Veterans Town and supporting the Veterans Town. And I know you guys do a lot of work and we really appreciate it, making us look good.
We've supported you in the past and we'll do it again.
You will support it. I look forward to the details and working with the council to get it all approved.
In light of what Valerie said, there will be opportunities for vandals to disturb the statues. And it just hit me, you know, maybe the idea of maybe a sculpture garden, you know, so everything, all the sculptures could be secure.
If it belongs to the state, you vandalize the state statue. Okay, that's not like a city statue. No matter what I put down, they can vandalize. They drive over my memorial garden up by the American Legion. Whatever we do, we feel that that offloads. Every 20 feet, a year will pass. And that is the original design. Every 20 feet, a year will pass and we'll get the wars are beginning. If I was to worry about annual vandal, yes, that's possible. If I was to worry about that, we'll never do anything.
Privacy is with the presidents up there and, I mean, those are all they.
That's why we need to fly them when we do that.
Yeah, we need to do all we can to protect them.
We will.
Val always kind of sees the problems in the community and tries to avoid them, but we will do what we can to make sure.
I just have one clarification.
Yes, sir.
It says here in the paper that you handed out that it was Lieutenant Charles Russell. And it goes on, you mentioned a Corporal Lawrence.
Corporal, they made him lieutenant afterwards.
Okay. And then, just before his death, Clarence Russell.
Yeah, that's the middle name, I'm sorry.
Okay.
I'll correct that.
All right. I just wondered who it was. And be one of the three.
We'll write on the statue, right? It's hard to cross that out.
Don, August 3rd.
Yeah, uh, you got 20, 30 seconds?
30 seconds, then we gotta move.
If they don't, August 3rd. I'll do all the, I'll change clothes. I'm now the American Legion and, and save the year. On the 3rd of August, we will have a demonstration in Hot Springs at St. Hennion Park.
Thank you. That's a Monday. Thank you.
I'll be back after a minute.
From the county, Kristi Noem says she will be attending.
Kristi Noem says she'll be in town. This is the first day of the Sturgis rally. We have time to work on the details. It's not gonna be a, it's gonna be a demonstration, we're just to speak on different veterans groups, motorcycle groups. I hope to bring about a thousand motorcycles on Saturday night, Thursday. So we'll see how that works.
Great, thank you. We'll sign you up for marketing, too. All right, Don, if you wanna try out our new format, I'd appreciate it.
Thank you. My name is Don Johnson, and I'm here to represent the Hot Springs Public Library.
Can you get that back also?
Oh, yeah, we'll see. Maybe we could just plan to have one at the table.
Good evening.
Going forward, going forward.
My name is Don Johnson, and I'm here representing the Hot Springs Public Library. I realize that later you're going to have a discussion and possibly a vote on memberships, whatever, for the city employees to the time.
It's just, gosh, not long, there'll be no voting tonight, it's for discussion.
We didn't get anything to you ahead of time, so we composed this letter to present, in hopes that you will consider our opinion when that discussion time comes. On March 13, 2015, Dear Mayor Don Al and the City Council of Hot Springs, in response to Resolution Number 2015-16, A Policy to Establish Use of the City of Hot Springs Facilities by City of Hot Springs Employees, we have written this letter for Mayor Don Al and the members of the City Council. The staff of the Hot Springs Public Library would like it known to all that they would appreciate being given access to the Evans plunge and some of the golf course. We understand, as of Friday, our understanding is that it may be a 20% discount on the current rate. An alternative, if given as a benefit, we would pay the tax on the benefit price. We are willing to pay the tax on the benefit price. That's our opinion at the library. Sincerely, the Hot Springs Public Library Staff, Cindy Messenger-Taylor, Don Johnson, Amy Lee Caffey, and Rachel Babel.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Don.
Great. I'll make copies for everybody. Thank you. Okay, that is all I was aware of, communications from the public. Anybody else? All right, Kevin. Yep, along the way to, of course, master plan presentation.
Let me see, this turned off while we were waiting here. Okay? I don't think so. All right. Thank you. Sorry, that turned off while we were waiting. Well, my name is Kevin Norby. I'm a golf course architect. We're based out of Chaska, Minnesota, not too far from Minneapolis, and some of you faces I recognize, we were asked a little over a year ago to put together a long-range master plan for the golf course, and what I wanted to do was take about ten minutes to go through some slides. This is a, a few slides from a webinar that we put on back, I think it was in July, for the committee and some of the city council members and those of you who were able to attend, basically summarizing the process we've gone through and some of the recommendations that we made. So, a long-range master plan is something that can be done for really any kind of business, for golf courses. We do master plans to really try to establish a long-range vision for the golf course, to try to provide some direction on where we should go, what kinds of improvements are needed, and really to avoid costly mistakes. So, we started that process really by coming out and doing what we call an architectural assessment. I guess, first things first, we started a committee that I think was made up of some of you from the audience, some of the city council members, certainly Jason from the golf course, Kathy Jersa's been involved, but we went through a process of putting together an architectural assessment, and essentially what that means is, we looked at it on a whole-by-whole basis to try to identify the deficiencies or the, the problems or the issues at the golf course. We then also brought in a gentleman named Jim Keegan, who has a company called Golf Convergence out of Denver, Colorado, and he was brought in to do a market analysis and an operational review, or a financial review, and that was a fairly in-depth study. Basically, he looked at demographic information, so age, income, ethnicity, as it relates to Hot Springs. He looked at who competing golf courses in this market might be, so we looked at courses in, throughout South Dakota, we looked at courses in Rapid City, and basically kind of looked at courses within about a ninety-mile radius of Hot Springs, to try to understand who our competition is and who our customers might be. We then put together a, what we call a long-range master plan drawing, and that's essentially this drawing here. We had an open house earlier tonight, some of you showed up for that, and so we tried to answer some questions. We've also had a couple of committee meetings, we did the webinar, I think this information will be available for you on an ongoing basis, but then we put together this document, which was a summary report that identified all the issues and all the deficiencies that we found with the golf course, and all the good things, too, and then made some recommendations on which improvements might be most important. We put together cost estimates, we put together a phasing strategy, and we put together what we call an action plan. So, if you had a chance to look at this and reviewed this, there's a lot of numbers and a lot of statistics and a lot of, you know, just information that we've observed on the golf course, and it becomes a little bit overwhelming, so we put together what we call an action plan, which is just a very simple, one-page summary of what we think are the most important elements to address at the golf course. I've talked about deficiencies, and I don't mean to emphasize that all there is is bad things to talk about. You've got a really beautiful golf course here, you've got a great piece of property. When I go to the Vets Club, or, excuse me, the Elks Club, or I go to Meadowbrook, for instance, or Hart Ranch, in many ways, your course is as nice or better than those. It's shorter, and so in some regards, it's not as appealing to some people, and so getting in your car and driving an hour from Rapid City to come and play the golf course might not be as enticing to some people. On the other hand, most of the golfing public are people like those of you that I see here in the room. They're not single-digit handicap golfers who are out there for the strategy and the challenge of the game, they're just out there having fun, and they just wanna spend time with other people and with their friends and family. So, we did find some, some safety issues out there. We also feel that the golf course is in many ways a little too challenging. You have holes like hole number 11, where you have forest carries over a ravine in front of the green, and it makes it very difficult for kids, and women in particular, and some seniors, people who maybe don't golf as often, they find that particularly difficult. The ravine on number two in front of the tees is also one of those things that makes the golf course play more difficult and be less fun than it probably should be. The irrigation system is very old and very outdated and doesn't do a very good job of irrigating the golf course, and Jason spends a lot of time repairing leaks and just trying to address those deficiencies. The practice facilities, you do have a driving range, but it's very narrow and obviously was built at a time when people didn't hit the ball quite as far as they do today, and so it's, people are not only hitting the ball further, but they're hitting it further offline, so they're hitting golf balls out into number one fairway and out into number nine fairway, so we think that's a safety concern. Again, I mentioned it's a little short on yardage. One thing I hear every time I come here is, isn't there something we can do to get it a little longer, so that maybe the South Dakota Golf Association will consider holding some state qualifiers or some tournaments here? And although that's not normally something we spend a lot of time or a lot of money trying to do, because we're trying to make the course more fun, not more challenging, there are some opportunities here to, to address that idea. And finally, we did find that demographics really limit your ability to have this course be self-sustaining. I'm gonna try to go a little quicker than this, I'm getting long-winded, but kind of the low-hanging fruit here is that we wanna increase participation, we wanna get more people involved in the game of golf, and really the way we go about doing that is to make the course more fun, more enjoyable, and to improve the course conditions. All we can really do is compare your course to other courses and other places that people play golf, and if we wanna get people from Rapid City or surrounding towns to come and play golf here, we've gotta provide increased value. We've gotta do some things with the irrigation system, and we've gotta address safety or liability issues. So, here's really the challenge for the City of Hot Springs. The City of Hot Springs is a relatively old and population, lower than the national average, and your median income is considerably lower than the national average. So what that means is that we have people here who don't have as much disposable income as, for instance, Rapid City, or Minneapolis, or the national average. So, we need to try to keep golf affordable, or people are just gonna give up the game. Just real quickly, is Kathy in the room? Kathy Jersa? Let's see here, Kathy. Kathy's done a great job, even since I've been coming here in the last year and a half. We've got a new point-of-sale system and a new online booking system, I believe. She's, she's actually been, been really good at providing us with some numbers to help us understand rounds and revenue. You do, in 2013, so these numbers are a year old now, you did $400,000 in revenue, you did $460,000 in expenses. Forty-some thousand of that was the new maintenance facility, so it's a little bit deceiving. I think in 2014, those numbers were $406,000 in revenue and about $480,000 in expenses. Is that about right? So, the course loses between $20 and $80,000 a year. There's 4,500 green fee rounds, so that's people that don't have a season pass, they come in and they pay their money and they play golf, and on average, that revenue per round is about $26 per round. There are about 6,150 rounds that are season pass holders. On average, the revenue per round is about $9 per round. That is severely discounted, 65% discount when we look at it across the board. There's 1,100 rounds that were played that were given as a donation or given as free, and I understand some of those are fundraisers and comp rounds, so we'd like to see that number be down around one or two percent instead of 10%, and there's 138 season passes. So, the debate is always, we have this community asset, and do we treat it as a community asset, or do we treat it as this financial pool that should be self-sustaining? And it's difficult in this day and age to have a golf course that is self-sustaining. You hear all these great stories about all these great golf courses, and we just assume they all make money, and some of them do, but in a community like this, again, we have a limited population base, we're fairly isolated from the nearest large town, that being Rapid City in this case, it's difficult to make money, to make a profit, and so oftentimes the community has to subsidize these sort of operations, and it's no different than your water park, or putting a new roof on a community center, or city hall, or redoing the streets, or updating the shelter in the park. You've gotta spend some money over time. People believe that, like to believe that if you have this golf course, it should just take care of itself, it should make enough money, but in reality, it needs perpetual upkeep, and it needs some capital input, and in this case, you have a very old irrigation system, you have greens and bunkers and tees that are no longer level and no longer have good sand in them, so there's a lot of good reasons why a community should invest in their golf course. Some of the obvious reasons are that it provides open space and recreation, and gives kids and families something to do, but in your particular case, the city made a commitment here years ago, 2005, I think, to develop a housing community around this golf course, and there's some beautiful houses out there, and I noticed a couple of new houses that are under construction when I came here today. And so, as the community grows and as people build houses on those lots, that's gonna increase your tax base. And I understand that those people are not necessarily residents of Hot Springs who are moving out to the golf course and building a bigger and newer home, they're people that are moving to town because they have a second home or they've retired, so this is a great, this is new money, this is, this is increasing your population base, this is really a great thing, and it's hard to find a golf course that has residential lots available on it, so you've got something fairly unique, and I would think you could market that to Rapid City and elsewhere. It also provides a fair amount of, and it's hard to quantify this, but it provides a fair amount of sales tax revenue. People that come to town and play golf here, they also stop at the restaurants, they fill up their car with gas, and I heard somebody today in one of the meetings said that they, they just saw a study, and the average person that comes to town, and I believe this was that plays golf here, spends $240. So, if they're staying in a hotel and buying gas and going out to restaurants, that's probably So this is the master plan drawing that we created. Along with that, we created this, this action plan, which I know you can't read, but the information is available to you, but essentially, we identified about $2.5 million worth of improvements or things that could be done to the golf course. I wanna be really clear that we're not advocating that you spend $2.5 million on the golf course. What we did was identified all of the issues, old irrigation systems, safety issues, cart pads that are deteriorating, tees that need to be built to make the course more enjoyable for kids. We put all of that together, and then we started looking at, okay, now what's really important? Where are we gonna spend our money? What are we gonna focus on, and what are we not gonna focus on? And so, some of the plans that you see up here, if you happen to get a chance to look, you know, have got some great ideas, and I told somebody today, this was kind of the pipe dream plan. This was the plan to build a new par three and lengthen number six and, you know, create a new short game facility, and all of that sounds great, except that it isn't gonna create one nickel of additional revenue. The kinds of stuff we really need to focus on is this stuff, and so what we did is we said, in the first year, 2015, there isn't any money allocated right now for golf course improvements, so let's focus on things that are kind of easy and inexpensive. So it's adjusting the fairway mowing lines to widen them out. For instance, on hole number two, if you play golf out there, you know that number two is this fairly narrow fairway, and the right side comes up really fast, so we can widen that out and make that fairway a little wider. We can adjust these fairway lines to make it more fun. We can remove some trees to make the course a little safer. There's some places like on number one tee, where if you hit the ball and you happen to hit a ball three or four or five feet off the line, it's gonna come right back at you and potential safety issue. There's a ravine on hole number 11 that has eroded over time, and we think that if something's not done with that fairly quickly, that ravine is gonna wash away and that, that green and that fairway are gonna fall in, so I understand there's already been some drawings prepared on that, and we've talked a little bit about that, I have some thoughts on that. I'd like to see, one of the, one of the big priority items for me is to realign number nine fairway and to remove some trees there so that we can see the fairway, which addresses not only a safety issue but a playability issue, and that also gives us the ability to widen the driving range a little bit. Now, that can be an expensive process, or that can be an inexpensive process, but it starts by just agreeing that this is something we wanna look at. There is a, a small booster pump on the front side of the golf course that is not big enough, and therefore we don't have adequate irrigation coverage, particularly when we get up on number five and up on number six up there, so that booster pump needs to be redesigned. Need to come up with an irrigation plan, figure out how big that pump needs to be, how big There is a small booster pump on the front side of the golf course that is not big enough, and therefore, we don't have adequate irrigation coverage, particularly when we get up on number five and up on number six up there. So, that booster pump needs to be redesigned. We need to come up with an irrigation plan, figure out how big that pump needs to be, how big the pipe needs to be, so that in the future, when we put the irrigation system in, and we figure out our water supply issue, it can all be tied in, and we're not scratching ahead, wondering why we didn't put a bigger pump in or a bigger pipe in. Reconstructing the pond on number 17 to potentially become an irrigation pond, and then eventually getting around to putting a new irrigation system on the front nine. So, that kind of gives us the first five years. There's a number of other longer-term improvements, and I won't go through all of them, but it talks about expanding the driving range so that we have a place for kids and families to go to learn the game, and to attract people who might want to come here and play golf, but don't consider it a legitimate golf course because it doesn't have a practice facility. Rebuilding tees and bunkers. Rebuilding tees and bunkers will reduce maintenance, and again, make the course more enjoyable for more people. There's again been some talk about lengthening the course, and one of the plans we have here looks at lengthening the course to a par 71, and about almost 6,200 yards. That's still a relatively short course, but that length, of course, is actually almost exactly what people tell us they want to play for yardage. So, when we survey people, generally, the women will say, we want to play somewhere around 4,600 yards. The men say, we want to play somewhere around 6,050 yards. So, I would consider this an ideal length for your golf course, given that your competition is upwards of 6,800 to 7,000 yards. So, this really appeals to the masses, whereas most people in Rapid City are not playing those courses from 7,000 yards, even though they are 7,000 yards long. We can look at rebuilding putting greens, cart staging areas, and repairing some of the cart paths out there as well. And then, some of the other things that we talked about, so I'll lump this into a category called additional recommendations, is to revise your season pass and your cart storage rates. I won't get into what exactly that is, but we think there's an opportunity for you to increase revenue. It's not gonna be politically popular, but it never is. So, reducing free rounds to 1%. I'd like to see a customer survey done of the golfers, so that we understand who our customers are, where they're coming from, what tees they like to play, what they'd like to see done to the golf course. The input we've had to date has been people who either been on the committee, or have shown up to the open houses, or have sent letters in, and those letters were forwarded to me. And so, that's a good idea, but it's certainly not a cross-section of the people who are coming from Rapid City or elsewhere, or Hart Ranch. We're actually suggesting you reduce your marketing. Last year, you spent, in 2013, you spent $40,000. We think those dollars can be spent better elsewhere. And Kathy's been doing a great job of building the email database, which means she can do some email blasts, and I think that's more effective use of your advertising dollars or your marketing dollars. And then, things like building junior tees, so we can, again, I keep saying, get the kids involved and grow the user base. So, there's really four things you can do here. You can choose to do nothing and continue to play the golf course that you play. It's gonna continue to deteriorate, and the problem is only gonna get worse. The irrigation system's gonna get older, the tees are gonna get more beat up. The safety issues are gonna continue to be there. You can do a little bit of work for the next 10 or 20 years, every year, and that's not a bad option, but the golfers will tell you that's gonna get old. Every year, you've got something going on on the golf course, and we constantly have a new tee, or a temporary tee, or a temporary green, something's under construction. You can kind of bite the bullet and take care of all of those critical issues at once. That's those first five years. That's probably upwards of 3/4 of a million dollars. The irrigation system alone is probably pushing $600,000, $500,000 to $600,000. And then, lastly, you could start with some modest improvements, so maybe just picking away, which is kind of where we went with our action plan, picking away at some of the higher priority items, and at some point, you just finish off those high priority items by some sort of a sales tax program or bonding for it, and you can decide which works best for you. But my goal is to tell you what the issues are and what the options are, and to ask you if you have any questions. Do we want to take questions, or should we just leave this at a presentation?
They seem pretty quiet. I can just comment that we're already doing a couple of things that you proposed of the low-hanging fruit, so it was good to see those. And, what do you want to talk about hole 11, ravine? In case we got, we did tonight, between what we're doing, and what do you think we should be doing? It's my only question.
Another option. Another, and we have another option, we'll talk about, Jason, we don't have to talk about that tonight.
No, I'm just playing, you know, I do want to talk about that if we're not on the same page. Val?
So, you say every year we're falling short $20,000, $80,000.
Right.
And then, with these plans, like you said, obviously, we can't do all of it at once.
Right.
It's supposed to improve the golf course to hopefully bring in more revenue eventually, or is sustainable?
Yeah, regardless of...
Self-sustaining?
Well, the goal is always to...
I mean, we're not always in the...
Yeah, the goal is to make this self-sustaining. Obviously, in 2013, you were very close, and you look at this year, and the early start we're getting, and the forecasted weather, this should be a great year. I would be misleading you if I said, if you do a million dollars' worth of work, or you do a half a million dollars' worth of work, that suddenly you're gonna be in the black. I don't think that's likely to happen. I think that it's gonna vary from year to year, depending on weather. There's this old adage that if the golf course makes money, it's good management. If the golf course loses money, it was the weather. And that's gonna continue every year. You'll have years where you make 20, years where you lose 20, and years where you lose 80, and you're gonna have to subsidize it. Keep in mind that those numbers include things like maintenance buildings and equipment costs, and those kinds of things that I'm suggesting are normal expenses that has to occur on any kind of a public asset, whether that's a building, or a golf course, or a street. And so, what I'd like to tell you is, yes, you know, build more forward tees, and improve your driving range, and people are gonna come, and they're gonna play, and to some degree, that's true. We know that we need to get more kids and more people involved in the sport. The kids are not gonna come from Rapid City, you're gonna have to do that locally. And so, I'd like to see better practice facilities, I'd like to see a junior program. These kids are the future of, you know, golf in Hot Springs. So, they're gonna grow up, they're gonna play golf, they're gonna come back, they're gonna have their families here. But the other thing you can do is you can make some changes here, improve turf quality, add some length, get rid of the forced carries, and make the course more fun. And I think people will come here. They're not gonna stop having their membership at the Elks Club or at Hart Ranch, but they are gonna go, God, what a great value. It's a beautiful golf course, it's in great shape, I love playing there. And they're gonna come here two times, six times, 12 times a year, and they're gonna spend $26 a round, not $9 a round. So, as important as it is to cater to your residents and your season pass holders, honestly, the money is, there's better money in bringing in rounds from outside. Now, again, both of these are limited. You can only grow your customer base here in Hot Springs so much, and we can only attract so many people from outside. Does it make sense to advertise to people in Minneapolis? Probably not. But what you need to do is what, exactly what Kathy's doing, build that customer database, and she should have 4,000 to 10,000 people in that database. So, on Thursday morning, if she's got openings on, you know, Friday morning, she should send out an email, and maybe you'll get some people from the Elks Club to decide to jump in the car and come out and play. And, you know, all it takes is another thousand rounds at $26 a round, and you can do that easily. So, I mean, there's no question that that can happen. So, I guess what I'm saying is there are certain things that will translate into growing the game, increasing your customer base, and it's things like email marketing, making the course more enjoyable, improving your practice facilities, new irrigation system. Those are where I would spend the dollars.
Any other questions?
Yes, sir.
You're a golf course architect.
That's correct, yes.
Have you ever done studies or statistics on what percentage, say, going around the country, what percentage of municipal golf courses are profitable?
I don't have that information, but Mr. Keegan, who did the study for us, does have that. I would say that most municipal golf courses are probably subsidized by the city, and...
When this was a nine-holer, the front nine, and I'm guessing that you're probably directing a lot of your attention on the front nine, being it's the oldest, it was profitable. It did bring profit to Hot Springs.
Yeah, a lot of our improvements, our recommendations are on the front nine, and much of that revolves around the fact that the irrigation system is very old and outdated and very problematic. But it's also the older course, so it's got some issues with trees, it's tighter, so it's got some issues with safety. But we do have a number of recommendations for the back nine. I would say that they're not as pressing. Certainly, the safety issues, it's much more spread out, and the houses haven't been built yet, so we don't have the safety issues there. And I do think that there's an opportunity for your course to be profitable, but again, I would be misleading you if I said, if you do all of this, you don't have to worry about subsidizing it anymore. I think that would be dishonest.
Thank you, Kevin.
Thank you.
Kevin. And Jason and Kathy also, I know you guys work very closely, and the committee, the golfing committee, there's a lot of you who are here tonight, so just thank you for your support on this. And we're gonna do what we can to report, so...
If I could interject one thing I wanted to say, so where do we go from here? A couple things. I would like to see a customer survey, so that you can better understand who your customers are, and this would be an email survey that could, there could be a link on the website, so, you know, people could go online. We want golfers and non-golfers, and this would be conducted ideally by Golf Convergence. They have a very sophisticated 25-question survey, it's not particularly expensive, the information is incredibly valuable. So, that would be one thing. Two, I think, ideally, I would like to see the city council adopt the master plan. That doesn't mean that you're committing to making all of the changes that are in here, but what it does mean is that if you're gonna plant trees, or you're gonna work on cart paths, or you're gonna build a new tee, you're gonna do it in a manner which is consistent with the study, and so, you have something you can fall back on. The last thing we really want to happen here is for this to get rolled up and put in a corner somewhere. Every greens committee meeting, you should have this in your hand, and talk about, you know, where is the money gonna come from, what's the priority, how are we gonna get that done? And I want to be at your disposal. We don't have to go out and hire a contractor to come in and build this and do a turnkey project. We do all kinds of projects of all sizes, and Jason and I talked today about a list of things that, you know, they could do. So, please, use me as a resource. I'm free if you just pick up the phone call, it gets more expensive if I have to come here, so...
Sure.
Okay?
Wes, do you wanna, I know this is kind of your baby in the beginning, do you want to adopt it? Can I ask you?
Well, what he's requesting?
I think we should have the money. I mean, I think we need to at least try to adopt what he's telling us, I mean...
I think I've been talking with Jason and Kevin, I mean, there's a lot in there. We talked about a lot of different things as far as water sources and stuff like that, and irrigation is probably number one, how we decide to do it, and we have to have some planning, and that's really, can we act on it now? Can we act on it now? Can we vote on this now?
Vote on the agenda.
I think we have to add it to our next agenda.
So, can we add it to our next agenda?
Absolutely, yes.
All right, thank you. And we are gonna look into the survey I did, so...
Yeah, feel free to call me, and I can certainly put you in touch with Mr. Keegan. It's not critical that it be adopted tonight, it might be helpful for you to have a work session or talk about it again. And again, it doesn't lock you into implementing it in its entirety, it's simply, it's like a comprehensive plan for your city. It's something you'll refer to as you make changes or proposals come forth, so...
It's a great idea, we're gonna put it on the agenda for action next time. And if we have any questions before that, or the council, I hope they call you, or we'll talk to Jason on feeling good about adopting it, so...
Thanks, Kevin.
Thank you.
All right, and for non-golfers, thanks for your patience. We're gonna move to personnel. Did you want to sneak out, Kevin?
I might be though.
I know you probably got a little bit of a drag. Again, like I said in the beginning, we're gonna do a couple motions under personnel. I have one, Amanda Scott, need a motion to, we already hired her, but we're going to officially do it. Amanda and Robert?
Yes.
Probably get that motion.
Okay.
Any discussion, Robert's view, sir, right?
Yes.
All right, Nick?
Yes, yes, my...
Whatever you want to call him.
Yeah, okay.
But Amanda Scott is doing the summer rec program as the director, and Robert's helping us here at Bueller Center, so I got a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Are you opposed?
Abstained.
Okay. So, the rest of the, and remember, I removed item I, we already voted on Zach last time. Ordinants. Misty, I'm gonna kind of let you help explain this, if anybody's got any questions about it.
This is the supplemental appropriation ordinance, number 1154, we redacted it at the last conference meeting, we're having...
Can somebody give her a microphone?
Oh.
Or speak up? Sorry, Misty.
That's right, thank you.
We've got all elongated now, set up now.
This supplemental appropriation ordinance, we redacted the first one, which had the money coming out of general fund. This appropriation ordinance is just to show in the books the revenue received from the airport master plan grant, and to pay the city's 5% of the expenses out of the sales tax fund, which was budgeted for in the 2016 appropriation ordinance.
Motion to approve.
I'll second that. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Are you opposed? Motion carried. Thank you, Misty. Resolution is A. The Sangastora Irrigation District we brought up in early January, we tabled it, we would like to just finalize the decision and live with that.
Motion to approve.
Okay. So, we're approving paying for the irrigation district, Sangastora Irrigation District, just so we're clear.
Nolan, did you find out anything on that?
You were telling me the other day about that.
No, I didn't.
Mr. Gunning, just be reporting contacts, as he said what the question we have.
So, this is...
The deadline's May 1st. That's when he's gonna know.
Are you, what are you proposing with your comment?
Well, I guess, how does it benefit us, I guess, if we pay for that water if we can't use it?
Well, we don't, we will not be growing crop out there anymore, if that's what you're implying, per FAA requirements. I brought the invoice, it's $4,800 and change. I don't believe we've used it too much in the past, but it is water rights if we do need it out there. So, we can decide if we want to pay this $4,800 to continue to have water rights out, and this, by out there is the airport, for people who are not familiar with what we're talking about. So, I have a motion and a second, so all in favor of paying to have water rights out there? What did they use for? Well, the potential was if we had a drought year, we were growing crop out there, because we had to, because we were spraying slug. we had to, because we were spraying sludge. Right. No longer sludge. Correct. So what is the water for now? I'm just curious.
That's what we're talking about. We don't have a use for it now.
So then maybe you ought to table it until we get some information.
No, no, we, the reason, there is no immediate need for this water. It's, do we wanna continue to have the rights if we need the water, or do we want to give up those rights?
It's my opinion that once you acquire water rights, you never give them up.
But the only time we're allowed these water rights is if that lake is at a certain elevation. If that lake is not at a certain elevation, you do not get the water, and you still pay for it. But I guess, I was kinda under the understanding that FAA was going to kinda tell us what, how we should proceed with this.
The FAA does not recommend that we give up our water rights. Our attorney does not recommend that we give up our water rights.
I talked to Mr. Gennigus, and he said that we could later on reapply for these water rights. He doesn't know how it would turn out.
If someone else does acquire them, yes.
He doesn't know how it would turn out, I guess, if we declined it.
I have the contract, if anybody wants to see it, you know, if we wanna delay the vote again, you're welcome to look at the contract.
Then you could just now state that our attorney said that we should not give up our water rights?
Well, it's basically what you said. You just don't ever give up water rights.
Once you get them, you never give them up.
You know, so it wasn't a, for a specific reason, just the concept of...
Right.
Do you really wanna give up your water rights?
Right.
I was talking to one of the water board members, Ray, he was just one voice out of him, and he was saying also, if you give them up, it's gonna be hard, harder to get it back. That was Tom Law.
But there's, Careland is, you know, you are correct, there is no immediate purpose for using that water. Thank you.
So we're gonna pay almost $5,000 a year for, as long as the city's here for water, we'll never give it.
Well, you've been paying it for many, many years already.
Probably used it before.
And do you think there's a need for it?
Yeah, we've used it, yeah.
Do you think there's a need that we would keep it?
Eventually down the road, we, if Leans do what they say they're gonna do.
Well, and I did ask them what they thought about it too, and it was kind of that same deer in the headlights, you give up water rights, kinda thing. I mean, it's just the concept of giving that up, just like Carl said, and our attorney said, and Pete Lynn and Sons said, and the FAA even thought it was something that, you know, they wouldn't advise that we give up, but they understand if we do. I have no vote on, I'm just sharing information.
After Leans got through mining it, they said they'd have it flat enough to work to irrigate, and then we could put in, us, the city, or Pete Leans could seed it in the Eltal to work to irrigate, and then we'd get a hay crop out of it.
Some time down the line.
Yeah. But the city could do that themselves with the blade, according to our engineer. We could go out there and smooth that out to where we could do that ourselves.
You mean not where they'd be mining?
Even if they don't mine. We don't know if they're gonna mine, yeah.
Sure.
Well, even regardless of who smooths it out, if we plant something out, we're gonna have that water. I know, that's what I'm saying, if we smooth it out, if we're not gonna use it.
We haven't used it for the last two years.
We have a motion and a second.
I guess my input is that you don't give up a water right.
Well, we have a motion and a second to approve going into the contract again. So all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Abstained.
Motion carried. We have water rights. All paid over. Resolution B, administrative policy regarding nuisances and property maintenance violations and enforcement. We talked about this before, it's time to do something.
I would make a motion to approve it.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All in favor?
I have a question. Never mind.
Go ahead, Wes.
No.
Okay, I didn't hear. Yeah, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carried. All right. Getting through the list here. Resolution C, increase Mueller Center rental rates. The rates are in your package. I have last year's rates, if anybody's wanting to compare them.
Yeah.
Oh, do they? Oh, okay.
It's basically $10 on every floor.
We talked about it in the beginning.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carried. All right. Resolution 2015-22, surplus outdated computer and tech equipment.
Motion to approve.
Second. Any discussion on this? Where did the 20 computers come from?
Multiple departments have them. I'll go, so now we're gonna stop that.
Any other discussion questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. E, resolution 2015-23, establishing seasonal pay for summer season. The main reason for this is the minimum wage increase that was bestowed upon us by our state.
Motion to approve.
I'll second that.
Any discussion on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. O business, and this is discussion item only, proposed resolution 2015-16, establishment of employees of the plunge and the golf course.
I thought we had already established this.
For the plunge.
For the plunge. I thought we had also established it for the golf course.
Yeah.
Is it out?
No. Yes, it will.
And this is for the employees of the golf course and the employees of the plunge building?
No, this is for the entire city.
Yeah, it's got the 20%, as Don brought up, actually, Don Johnson, the 20% discount.
I personally feel this is the way to go. I just, I don't think we can afford to give up that much, and this way it would make it fair for all the city employees. If we had a 20% or 25% discount on anything, I just think it'd be, it'd be the fair way to go about it. Because the library, they already said they wouldn't mind paying the tax on it if it was a benefit to them, and I know the guys at the street shop, kinda same way. I mean, you got a lot of employees that you're just kinda skipping over once again.
Are you making a motion to approve it?
Well, it's just a discussion only.
If I interpret correctly, 20% discount would be a 20% off of the current rate of public. What the librarians, I think the lobbying board, is free access and pay the tax and the full benefit. So the, they'd have access to each, and they'd pay...
And I'm proposing just a flat discount for all employees, all of them.
So a 20% discount or a full access?
No, just a discounted rate.
So 20% of the IRS gives us as our ultimate amount, okay? That's contrary to the...
That's just me. Which is basically what this said.
It should be 20% off to 25%.
For the Adams plunge, for the city employees.
I'm not saying give any of them free anything, I'm just saying, every employee gets a certain percentage off, be it whatever they choose.
I think we need to look at not giving multiple discounts on one membership. A lot of places are like that, and you can't take two or three memberships, or I'll take 25% because I live in Hot Springs, and give me another 20% because I'm a city employee. I think we should...
But some of them don't live within the city, too.
I know, I'm just, I know this is just up for discussion, and I think we might consider that, because people are getting 55% memberships. If they get 30% off in November, they're getting 25% off, and then you could tap on another 20. Percent, it's free.
No, they only get one, in their special.
Well, some people are getting more, 'cause they...
Nobody gets 55%.
Pardon?
Nobody gets 55%.
She's referring to the...
Christmas special.
The Christmas special. Yeah, no. Well, they do, because they called me and said they do. I get their line.
I think anybody getting 55%.
Take the theater one. Okay, do we wanna do any more discussion on this? It is a discussion.
Well, if you work for the city, or you get 20% off, and if you live in the city, you get 25% off.
Get 20% off of the 20, 25%. You don't get a 45% discount.
Kinda get 45%.
You get 45% off.
No, that's also not true. You get, all right, you're on your lesson. So if you live within the city, and you wanna work at, maybe wanna go to Adams' plunge, and you get the city rate, that's 25% off of what the rate is, and then if you work for the city, you would get 20% off of that discount. So you first apply a 25%, and then you apply the 20% remaining amount. If you were at Adams, that'd give you a greater discount. You do one, it's like two-step, you do one and a second, so 25% instead of 20%.
So 55%.
But the reason this is on the agenda is for discussion, I would like to make the council's a direction to form a policy, so we can propose to the employees to know what might be done for their benefits. Last time we had this on the agenda, there was no real consensus as to how you can make this the best way for us to bring into a vote, and so tonight, I'm really asking us to get a direction of how we can rework this, propose it to employees, get their feedback, and you guys can make a motion on this, and get a move about it.
Yeah.
I think sometimes the council needs to meet, somebody needs to need to look at how we're giving discounts at the plunge. I support this, but I'd still like for somebody to look at it, you know, the way that discounts work.
Right, it's my understanding it's you cannot combine discounts, I'm not sure what happened with the Christmas special, but it should be where...
So you can combine the Christmas special with the discount?
Yeah, we can, except exclusion score, as you like.
No.
It's all how you work.
Most generally, they say the later discount is, so I mean, if it's Christmas special, it's 30%, even though you live in town, you don't get another 25%.
I'm just telling you, as someone called and told me. Well, go ahead. Why do you propose to give the individuals that are working for the plunge the free membership, and the ones that are working for the golf course the free membership, but the individuals who don't work at either establishments only get the 20%?
Because if we give it to the other employees who don't work at these, it's an added expense to the city.
But have you talked to your employees to see if they would pay that?
Those people that work there already, it's no added expense.
But have you, have you asked the employees whether they would pay that additional, or that tax? Molten the... We have discussed it with the department heads, and they're supposed to take it down to the town.
So the way the IRS has...
And we're following IRS. I'm just looking at, trying to be fair for everybody.
Right, but the 20% in the free access, plus of the IRS, if you employ at that location, you can use that facility free as long as it is not in terms of additional cost. Or if you work for the city in general, but not specifically at the golf course or Adams' plunge, then you can get a 20% discount. So that's kind of what I'm kind of by the IRS. The council, within their right, could extend free access to also the employees, and those not working at the plunge, the golf course, to pay the benefits, that's kind of like an income, I guess.
The taxes.
Taxes on the benefit.
So, hey, do you get to use the runway for free, Kenny? He does now.
Yes, sir.
So basically, then, if you're mowing the grass at the golf course, you get those benefits, but you're penalizing the person that's mowing the grass, doing the same exact job at the cemetery.
We're following IRS law. It's not us.
Let's write it when we're ready.
It absolutely has to do with IRS laws.
But in a way, you're right, we should make it equal to everybody. Everybody should have to pay the tax, nobody should get it free.
Yeah, and just speaking from my department, I think that my guys would be more willing to pay the tax on the membership for them to golf out there. My biggest fear is this is gonna reduce my staff by 50% or better. I mean, these guys, they don't need necessarily the money, they go out there for the free golf. This is an industry standard, it's not special to Hot Springs at all, but what it also does is just from another perspective of revenue, if you get a free membership, most of the time, you're gonna actually buy some beverages, even if you're not a golfer, you're gonna invite somebody like your father-in-law, father, brother, or something to come out here. So in the long run, I don't think opening it up to all city employees, library, city, all that, is going to cost the city anything. And if you wanna be fair, I think we could take our money, which we don't have to pay for sales tax, the 20, whatever dollars we'd have to pay, that, we could donate it to the golf course or something, so...
Thanks, Jason.
Thanks, Jason.
Any other discussion on this item? It is a discussion-only item. Okay, new business. We're gonna set up a public hearing on the vacant liquor license, and proposing to use it at the Southern Hills Golf Course. There'll be a hearing on April 6th at 7:20 to discuss any concerns.
Do we have to vote on that? It's being proposed to accept it.
Proposed, yes, thank you. Isn't that a regular meeting?
Yes.
Our next city council meeting.
Motion to accept the hearing, then.
I'll second that.
Any other discussion on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So we'll talk about that on the 6th at 7:20 PM.
Did, excuse me, can I ask a question, man? Did we get a hold of state?
Yes.
I'd like to see their, what they said, did they send it to us in writing?
Ask them.
Did they send it to us in writing that we can use that, that isn't a club license?
Right, we can use that, but it's not restricted to clubs.
Did they send us that in writing?
We can get it in writing.
Okay, thank, I'd like to see that.
Yeah, we've discussed it with state many times, so I'm sure that's not an issue any longer, but it's a good question. B, motion to accept bid on surplus airport hangar doors for 480 bucks.
Motion to approve.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We sold some doors, all right, the budget's safe, but yeah. Thanks for working on that, Ed. C, motion to sign well-marked Blue Cross and Blue Shield health insurance contract for the employees that receive that benefit.
Motion to approve.
I did talk to them, and we did go down the cost. I...
Second, I think it was Georgia v. Carl this time. Georgia made the motion, Carl seconded it.
So I know Harley was working back when, kind of proposing bids on this. Did we do that again, or were we just...
No, we looked at Dakota Care and another one.
I think they provided a well-marked type of policy also. The, I don't know, Georgia, if you wanna talk to this, but the conversation with our well-marked agent enlightened us as to some grandfathering that we have in place for meeting the requirements of the Affordable Care Act. If we switch now, that grandfathering would go away, and our policy actually had a reduction in premium when we stay with our current provider. So for those reasons, after our presentation, we decided it was best to sign on to well-mark for another year.
Good. Is it... Was it very satisfied with the current coverage?
I'm sure they are. It's a real good plan for them. But I just wanted to make sure someone was looking out for the other side.
I had questions about it, too, Wes. I mean, I wanna make sure we didn't have other ways we could buy cheaper insurance.
Cheaper is not always better.
That's right, cheaper is not always better.
So, any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Somebody requested an update on the Pete Lynn Sons' proposed mining at the airport?
That'd be me.
Was there something specific you were concerned about?
Yes, I was. In this deal we received from Mrs. Boo's law office, it says in here that a final contract was negotiated, and I guess, I'm a little curious as to when this final contract was supposedly negotiated, because to my knowledge, this council has never sat down together as a whole with Lane to negotiate a final contract, so I'm a little confused by this. And each one of you should have had this, I guess, or you received it at one time.
Well, I gave it to you a couple.
It was a Supreme Court ruling, and I don't know where Ms. Boo's got that, Bo, Boo got some.
Are you referring to the doc, the document from Gunderson, Palmer, Nelson, all those guys?
Yep.
And you're referring to the bottom of page one, where the lease agreement with the city was entered into with Pete Lean and Sons was valid? Is that your?
No, it's, I don't know what this page is going to be, but it's, it's about the fourth page back.
Okay. Better than that different one, I don't know.
Actually, it's the sixth page back, under section ten, section eleven. And that's why I asked Nolan, I guess, I was kind of hoping Carol was going to be here tonight, because I had some other questions for her, too, but.
You need to let me know that before now, so I can ask her to be here.
Well, I talked to Nolan about it about last week, that's.
And you requested that the attorney be here today?
Well, no, I, I asked a question about that, also about the Steve Schumann thing. I asked for information on that.
We can discuss that later.
Yeah, we're going to have to.
We are not in a mining contract with Pete Lean and Sons. We are in the process of seeing if that is something we can continue to move forward. What I thought when I first saw this on the agenda was, um, the status of where we're at, and now that the FAA is involved, which, you know, they should have been a long time ago, they are requesting an environmental study that requires, um, tribal survey. And, um, that is something that the FAA does not pay for. Typically, the sponsor, which is us, would pay for that, but Pete Lean and Sons is doing some light work just to see what that would cost. And that's where we're at. You're welcome to my email correspondence with them if you'd like. But we are, we are not in a contract with them. However, prior to me being in this office, the council did agree to go into a contract with them based on certain requirements. So until, when we.
We accepted their RFP, is the only thing we done. We never entered into an agreement. This was February second.
Nothing is signed.
And that's why I'm wondering why she has the wording in here, so I guess.
That is not she. That is the law firm that represented us and with the State Supreme Court. She just let us know that we had a settlement.
I guess I will have to call her, I guess. Because I don't, I don't want Lane to be, I guess, under the assumption that, that there was a final contract somewhere, because there isn't.
Well, they are under the assumption that this, the council, prior to me being here, accepted their.
An RFP.
Correct. That's it, that's, we're still negotiating the contract. So there, do we still have an issue? You'd like to?
Now that we're not under a contract, I would think. Am I correct?
We are not in a contract with them, no.
That's why I want to make sure that they understand we are not in the contract phase of this.
Who is they?
Pete Lean.
They are well aware we are not in a contract with them.
Well, I'd like to have Ms. Carol here, I guess, so we can ask some questions about that situation with Steve Schumann. So I guess, if I need to put it on the next agenda, I will.
I will discuss that in executive session.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you. Alright, where are we? Um, item E. I'm not sure what this was, well, Craig, go ahead.
I'm watching, I mean, say, uh, our meeting in January, we got our audit back for the Far River Custer Waste Management. I gave it to Nolan, told him and America to go over that. We put out for bids to, to dig a new cell for the Garvey's. And the bid was opened on March twelfth, and our next meeting would be May.
So it is a quarterly meeting? Correct.
Yeah, and we extended the contract with, uh, Parker's. They have the contract for two more years to manage it.
Thank you.
It ain't really quarterly, it's like every two months, two, three months.
Okay. Can you just let us know when you meet again?
The next one, my this, the next one, uh, May.
But I mean, after you meet?
But you know, after.
Yeah.
Okay, no problem.
Thank you.
I can bring my, uh, agenda, I think.
Great, thank you very much. Just wanted to make sure we knew what you were doing. Alright, thank you. Um, I did, on the beginning of the meeting, add an item F. Debbie, I know that Donna snuck out, but, um, we just wanted to make sure that the council was okay with, um, four hours. The governor has granted state employees four hours of administrative leave on Good Friday, and, um, we're proposing that we do that, or, I would like a motion possibly to do this as well for the city employees.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Any discussion?
What's county doing?
I don't think we actually have to make a motion, because it's an.
We don't have to, we don't, I mean, I can just say we're going to do it, but some people get upset when I do stuff like that, so.
What's county doing, are they, they giving four hours?
I do not ask the county, maybe the county wants to, the county's shaking her head in the no direction.
Commissioner says it wasn't a duty contract.
We do not, we do not have to do it, it's, um, it could be my decision, but if you guys want to, are you okay with that? Then I'm okay with that.
We have a motion to second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Proposed?
Aye.
Nothing, just a timing, it's just that Friday.
Okay, that motion carried. Uh, committee reports, Carl, administrative.
And, March eleventh, we met at two o'clock, and these were the items that were discussed. We had an update on the Schumannic question from the last meeting on his settlement stipulations. We talked about surplus property policy update. City is looking at a citywide auction at the MIRF, uh, in the, in the spring. And the twenty fifteen dash eighteen distance abatement updated policy. Resolution twenty fifteen twenty-three summer seasonal rates, which we approved tonight. Employees of the golf course in Evans Plunge, we talked about that. Departmental organizational charts were discussed. Update on hiring of vacant positions. We had it, uh, had a booth at the Job Fair. And at the Job Fair, we had thirteen to fourteen booths, and lots of applications were taken on the jobs that are open with the city.
You had suggestion that we do it more often.
Yeah.
And also maybe even have it some at the library a little bit more.
We also discussed, uh, a fund at Wells Fargo involving the library that has eighty-five hundred dollars in change in it, which is fines, donations, and et cetera. And that fund has been there since nineteen seventy-nine. And no one with the city is on the account, that means we change. We talked about Channel ninety-one being administered by the school, and we didn't make any decision with regard to that.
Well, we've got a meeting tomorrow at the end of the school.
Good.
We've, Nolan, I, um, Scott from the chamber, and Justin.
There have been a lot of comments from the public with regard to that not being updated, uh, as it should be, on a bi-weekly or, or monthly access.
We, we need school tomorrow, so.
Okay. We discussed having all boards report to the council. I don't know how many boards we have.
Well, we've, we've talked about, yeah, I think there were at least five. We fund them in any way, basically, they have some kind of input to the city council.
And another item that was discussed was the bid board. The bid board members have lost, uh, two members on that board, so they're looking for a couple of people, I would think.
They are, yes.
We also discussed the second penny sales tax, and the last item was limitations on advertising tobacco and alcohol. Thank you, Val. And that was our meeting.
For all. Vote enforcement was pretty much the resolution we pre-approved. We're looking, we're still accepting resumes for that position. Uh, Georgia, you can have your meetings, yeah?
No, but, but, so, I, I did meet with a few anyway, just like I met with Jason and Kathy, we just did talk about the liquor license and, and stuff today, and of course the plan, but I, I do want to make, you know, March thirtieth will be our day for a meeting level then, the Wednesday before.
Okay.
That's a change in the agenda.
What meeting I?
For the advocate meeting.
Yeah, she's just changing the meeting publicly, so Ed, I know that affects you, and.
And his, and probably, yeah, yours will be okay.
But you'll notify those.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. Caroline, we just kept you on there, I know you requested middle of April for the, the next update.
Brian, Brian's still, uh, out of town, and we, we do keep it up by email, so if anyone who needed something from the Historical Commission, we could act instead of like that legally.
Okay, good. But you'll give us a report on North River Navy? Yes, thank you. We're just keeping you on there, so we don't forget it, but thank you, appreciate that. Um, Wes?
Yeah, we had a brief little meeting. We had an update on the, uh, hand dryers and the lights, bathroom, Centennial. We're going to go through with that, and get rid of the paper hand towels, and get some lights in there, so it's not like a jail cell anymore. We're going to put the fan at the depot, kind of a government thing, it only took a couple of years to achieve this exhaust fan for the bathroom. We talked about the RTP grant for the Freedom Trail, and, uh, we also talked about the picnic tables at the depot, which I'm, uh, in favor of leaving them alone, leaving them there, because we had people ask them, asking for them to begin with, so. Um, we had a little update on the summer rec program, and we haven't heard much back from the people on the garden, and, uh, I think that was about it. Do you, Caroline, remember anything else?
No.
I think that was it.
Yeah, we do need to hear, if anybody's here, part of the community garden, we do need to hear back from you based on the requirements of, of the city.
About city beautification when it comes to, uh, carefully cleaning out the river?
Is that?
Yeah, this would be a good time to start doing it. I noticed the hemlock plants are very young, and this would be ideal time to plant them, but the necessary protective.
So you don't. I can't hear you, Caroline.
I would say she's not going to get anyone to do that.
Right, and that, and that's kind of what I was going to ask you about, you know, we, we do have a concern that it is.
Yeah, and you can't burn it, because of the rules will still. Yeah.
Well, I believe, I think that was already discussed, and we're going to go forward with burning, so we're going to burn from the bridge at Collegium to Plunge.
Do you know when you're going to have?
Well, they was going to do it last weekend, but with fire danger, they said no.
I didn't think it was the Legion, I thought it was the Menucha Bridge.
Oh, maybe it is, I, I thought they said the Legion.
It was the proposal, and I, I haven't talked to Jim, I need to, I see him driving by, and I, I need to talk to him.
Alan, at Far, he's one of the chiefs, too, I believe.
Okay.
And he is saying that they're not going to do it last weekend because of fire danger, but they still plan on doing it.
We're finalizing the details, but we know we'll post on our Facebook page, and let the public know when it's ready, so you can take any necessary precautions if you like.
Can you kind of lasso in one of those two guys to give us the plan?
We're working on it, to be.
You are?
Yep, we did sound it, we seem to. The airport was supposed to be burned last weekend, but the wind and the conditions were producing for it, also with that.
We have water rights.
Yeah, so you give the ditch full of water, you ain't got no water.
Um, are you done? Is that it, Wes?
That's it.
Okay, so we'll get a handle on the, the burning and see what we're going with that. Uh, public safety, I did get input from the chief. He, um, they did the, um, use of force simulator, I called it, don't shoot simulator at the Job Fair. I don't know if you did not participate in that, it's a huge eye-opener. Uh, I thought it was, it was very successful in, um, helping people understand what law enforcement goes through in, in a situation like that, so if we ever get it back, I highly recommend you do that, if you didn't. His comments are, it was a great community, I'm sorry, a great opportunity for the public to see the split-second decision law enforcement is expected to make. We received a lot of positive feedback from participants, including myself. I spoke with a few citizens about issues they would like to address during the, um, safety forum. A few being the three-way stop at Butler Park, we have a lot of concerns about people running that stop sign. The recent vandalism around town, including out back here, and then kids skateboarding, and they're addressing all those items. He also wanted to bring up that we did hire new officers, Zach Schaefer, so, um, we have a new officer in town, so that's his update.
Yeah, yeah. Can I comment on something Mike told me?
Sure.
The VA is going to loan the police department two bicycles, they got lights and everything on them, for patrolling the summer.
You're right, and he did verbally tell me that.
Freedom Trail stuff. Did he have anything mentioning about that speed sign coming in town, or the portable sign?
We are, we are pricing those right now.
How about the portable sign, what's the story with that?
The one that needs to be repaired?
Yeah.
That's the story, it's being repaired.
Yeah.
Still in the street shop, apparently.
Okay, I'm not going to give up, so you're either going to fix it, or we're going to get it back and used.
We worked on it today, so it is something.
Every meeting, I'm going to bring it up, so.
Alright, Dwight?
We had our meeting on March tenth. Uh, Mr. Derek Backson came to the meeting, he's had some sewer issues on Fourth Street, and we think we figured out a solution for him. Tracy's going to help shoot some grade for him and stuff up there. The committee decided we opt out of the manhole installation on Twenty-Fourth Street. This is something that come about when Harley was still alive, that we were going to put a manhole in the intersection of Twenty-four and Ha, Twenty-Fourth and Hampton, uh, just for future use, with just stub outs on it. And it was going to cost the city about twenty-five grand to put in, and we decided to opt out of that, because the state's looking at doing a sewer line up there for us, so we're going to see what the state does first before we put that down. Uh, Tracy gave us some information on a new type of screw press for the sludge problem at the sewer plant, and we're going to get some more info on that before we move forward. Uh, the, one of the new PRB valves is being put in. Started last week, I think this week it should be in. Albany Water Avenue, main replacement plans are ready, and they're in the paper, I believe. The new trickle filter is being put in this week at the sewer plant. The east end of Dakota Street, uh, needs some more gravel, is brought to our attention, and has that been taken care of yet, Tim? Recommendation of the committee to get some gravel up there and fix that. So, and, uh, that's it.
Can you make sure we do a, a work order for that? Was there a work order done for the gravel? A work order done for the gravel? No?
I don't know.
Do you know that you...
Was there a work order done for the gravel?
The gravel and east Dakota.
I was seeing anything being done up there.
Okay.
I think, I don't think it's gonna do it.
Okay.
Which I, it's not... I understand because it's the new item on the bottom of the list.
All right, I'll, I'll follow up with that with Mary and see if there was a work order for it. Okay, thank you all. Misty, did you wanna share what we did today for fun?
Yes, sure. Today was a busy City Hall. We had the accountants and the auditors come in, and we got our first draft of the financial statements and accountant's compilation report for the year ending December thirty-first, two thousand thirteen. The auditors provided a letter going over the scope of their services, and they expect to begin effective today on that thirteen audit work. The accountants, um, then will be moving right into doing the pre-audit of two thousand fourteen, so... That was very exciting today at City Hall to get that done. Some of the other things we've been working on is, um, uh, the options, surplusing our items, updating our assets list. The benefits that we talked about earlier, visiting with the Walmart agent and looking at the options that we have for, um, our employees at the city for those types of benefits. It is election time, nominating petitions can be picked up at City Hall. And you do gather all your signatures, turn them in prior to March thirty-first, and remember to give the girls a couple of days to validate all your signatures. Looking forward to collecting more and more of those petitions. And then while it's my turn to talk, and I can steal a little spotlight, I wanted to recognize Val for bringing into the job fair, for Empower Coalition, for bringing in a gentleman to talk about internet safety. It wasn't super attended. For all of you that, um, are parents or have any questions about internet safety and some of the rest that are out there, our students who missed a valuable presentation, and we're gonna work on seeing if we can get that guy back, so thanks for doing that, Val. I learned a lot as a parent, and I look forward to having him come back to our community and educate more of us. That's all, yeah, thanks.
Yeah, I think Val too, I hope it was very informative. Yeah. So I, I, I am assuming we are gonna continue to work to get that back, and, and word of mouth will get a much better showing. Thank you, Misty, Nolan.
Yes, uh, Misty, I didn't get into it, but I wanna thank Val as well, Empower Coalition, for making our first public safety forum a success it was. I know having both police department there and Empower was a great first start. I look forward to building off of that for our future safe, public safety forums. I wanna thank all of the businesses that participated, had their booths out, showing that Hot Springs is indeed hiring for many positions, whether it be seasonal or full-time. It was a great first effort to get these businesses filled and grow our community, so thank you to anyone whose audience either attended or was part of a business that supported it. In terms of what I've been doing, the day-to-day stuff, a lot of this agenda, I've had my hands in, so I'll just leave it at that. And then also, some more fun information, um, on our website, we are doing, we have a listing for requests for proposals. So any job we have out for local residents can do, it'll be on there in terms of contractor work. So it's a great first step if you are an electrician, plumber, people of that nature, do new street lighting maintenance. Log on and see what we are hiring for, looking to do contractor work for. We can obviously, you know, email everybody saying what we're looking to hire or to contract out, but that's a great place to see what the city needs for services. Other, um, I guess, positive updates is Evans Plunge has a new website, EvansPlunge.com, same new domain, but different look, and it's continuing to be growing. We're trying to grow our email marketing base through that, so we can cut, uh, cut costs on our printed ads and reach more of the targeted demographic that we're trying to get a message with. And then same with the library, that one is kind of surprised me this last weekend, that update as well. It's now a mobile responsive site, so if you have an iPad or tablet device or smartphone, our Hot Springs Public Library site is more information than ever, more accessible than ever. So I encourage you guys to check out both of those. That's, I'll leave it at that for tonight.
All right. Can I ask you something, Nolan?
Yes.
Did you get this letter from Lindsey?
Aye.
Yeah, I was just kinda talking. I, I just wanted to ask if you would consider, you know, he talks about organizations the city gives money to, and maybe creating a standardized budget request form, so we can properly account for the money being spent with consideration in oversight. I think this is a really good...
Yep, that's some of the tools we're developing, is when people come to us with proposals and requests, we can hold them accountable to it. I know we talked about, or the Don Ackerman, the, the parks improvement request form.
Well, this is mainly for budget, the people who come to our budget here.
Right.
Lindsey attended all of it here.
And we talked about that at that, and that was...
What I was gonna ask, is how a better system plays.
I was just wondering if you couldn't look at doing a, a standardized budget request form.
Yep, sure, thank you.
Okay, I won't talk about that, thank you, Caroline. Bringing that up. Um, and you all should've got a copy of that, right? Okay. Couple of things that we haven't discussed, I wanted you all to know that we received, um, environmental assessment approval for our, our taxiway out at the airport. I don't know, I think you were... So, I just got this, so I'm sure Ed cares more than anybody else, but we did get approval for the taxiway from the environmental study, so I'll just give you a copy of that if you want. That what you, you really know, and I've got witnesses that I told you. All right. The other, the other good thing is, is the, the South Dakota Department of Transportation Reconstruction Project of Downtown Hot Springs was selected by the Federal Transportation Administration for pedestrian study for walking, running, traffic, wheelchair traffic, and bicycle traffic. We have been asked by the South Dakota Department of Transportation to identify and invite interested members of the community to participate in this study on April twenty-third, meeting at the Mueller Civic Center. Starting time for the event has not yet been established. So if you are a walker, runner, wheelchair person, bicyclist, uh, you know, this is when we could talk about a bike lane through town, or any other types of non-motorized traffic in town. This is really a big deal. This is really exciting that the, the Federal Transportation Administration has chosen Hot Springs for this study. I highly recommend that we have a good showing on the twenty-third. I like the bike, and I will be there because I really like biking. So if you have an interest like that, please plan some time on the twenty-third to participate in that, and it'll be on our Facebook and website.
Please contact me directly.
Or contact Nolan.
I'd like to know how many we have in each group, I guess. We can tell the DOT, the FDA, what we have in line for participation. If you don't have my contact information, feel free to catch me after this meeting, I'll provide it to you.
It's a great deal, let's, let's show them our care. Screen on the green too, I think we need to thank Empower for that too. Guys are awesome, thanks. You're really benefiting the community, and we appreciate it. And then we got Lindsey's letter, we will address that. And, um, unless you wanna start making up stories?
Motion to go into executive session.
There is possibly action following. On favor?
Aye.
We'll take a five, ten, ten-minute break. And, uh, yeah. Again, thank you all for participating, we really appreciate it.
Is it lunch tomorrow, or is it exciting? Well, you have to think about it, that answered my question. This is what you do.
I think I pushed out the Wednesday, so...
Do you know where, do you know where Wes is? By State Own?
Yeah.
Take that rope past Wes's house, third to the end, right at the end, turns up the door and robes. Talk to Mike, seriously.
I will, I will, yes.
That's the sewer, we have a public hearing on the thirty-fourth, two o'clock.
Want my phone, please, Dave?
Well, it is be tackled, it will be tackled after.
Yeah. Without the government, no. But, but right now, I think she's, she's, she's performing, so she's gonna cover that dad.
I don't know, this person, little brother.
I didn't know this, but she...
You know I'm not so good at that, I will do my best. All right.
I know that this whole thing, making that guy on a straight line is gonna be going, getting almost five, six. They're taking a straight line.
Executive session, yeah.
Come back to Biden.
Hey, welcome.
Hey, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
It's Nick, not Robert, it's Nick.
I will call you Nick. And if I don't, I apologize now, but...
I don't know, especially like the rest of them, by the time I figure out who the hell he is, he'll be gone.
No, no.